Good evening, it's six thirty, we have a quorum, we'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Mr. Izer.
Good evening, everybody, I'm back again for one thirty-two Middle Street. We talked about it at the last meeting about a potential common driveway or access over other than frontage, neither of which I'm asking about this evening. On the, just to remind everybody, that was a very small definitive subdivision. And one of the items on the plan was that the utilities were supposed to connect on Middle Street. The potential buyer would like to know if he can connect his utilities to Cozier Drive if that's going to be an issue. That's item number one, and then item number two, the plan shows a asphalt surface for the roadway. And this person would like to know if he can do stone dust TRG instead of asphalt. So, the two questions to the board regarding that.
For the E, I'm assuming that'll be across Mr. Cozier's driveway?
Correct, yes.
As long as there's an E's been granted for that to the town, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm assuming he's gonna have an even for it himself, right?
Yes, he will.
Okay, as long as there's a wide enough even for the town to get to in case they ever need to, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, how about everybody else?
It seems fine.
Anybody else? Mike, Mark?
Fine.
Okay, um, the, I don't have a problem with the TRG driveway either.
Only question I would have is whether it is satisfactory to the fire department.
Okay, well, I can certainly have him check that, if it is satisfactory to the fire department, then no issues.
No, there'll still be drainage and everything else accordingly, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that just the driveway for that one program, one residence, correct?
That is right, so basically it's just a driveway, it's a private driveway.
Right. Anybody else have any issues?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have for that, but while I've got you here, I just, we've been talking a lot about, and if it's not the appropriate time, let me know. We've been talking a lot about potentially holding town meeting and trying to deal with a warrant. And I know the board has three or four articles on there, is there anything that is absolutely necessary to have on the earliest warrant we can get at, or can your stuff wait?
What does it, what does wait mean?
Till probably fall, October, I mean, wait, I don't really know Jimmy, because we, we don't know what wait truly means. But I, in, hopefully, October.
I think the only thing that we'd probably really like to see on there would be, well, we can.
Industrial parking. Industrial parking.
Well, I don't know that that's a big deal, because he's not gonna be doing much for the right time, for the time being, that's gonna be, that could generate some serious discussion, I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking that the only thing we may want to see would be the two trust fund articles.
All right, what I'm trying to do is get stuff that's not going to incite conversation, so that we can whip through this, if we even have the meeting. I mean, at some point, we obviously will, but we're trying, if we do it on June, June eighteenth, like we're talking, I'm concerned there's not gonna be a lot of people show up, number one, and if they do, they want to get out as quickly as possible, so.
So I think the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is perhaps, perhaps the most important, because there is a pot of money waiting for a, for us to set up a way to retrieve it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's gonna generate a lot of negative discussion, because the reason it was thrown out a number of years ago, we've addressed by not, by not allowing the committee to spend much money without town meeting or select one's approval. So there was a concern once upon a time that the trust fund group could put the town into debt by themselves, and that's not possible any longer.
Okay, all right, well, just, you know, think about it, if something really needs to happen, we'll, I mean, we're gonna keep, keep evolving the warrant and what's gonna be on it. So if you have any issues, just let somebody know and we'll try to take care of it.
Okay.
All right?
Very good.
And are you talking about Megan's Way at all tonight?
No, we have no more information from DPW on that. The DPW director is in quarantine, because he went to the hospital with a family member and was exposed, and has been told to stay away from town.
Okay.
And his deputy, Dee Dee Deben, Deeper and Deezy has been talking with the deputy, but I think there may be a question of whether he thinks it might exceed his acting powers.
Okay, all right, now, then I don't, you won't need me to answer any questions relative to that. I, do you think you need me for anything else this evening?
Oh, one thing, we have now sent the one signature letter into the Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
So if you want to get that A and R plan that we approved at the last meeting signed, you can contact me or Jim or Joe.
Okay.
Any one of us has the authority to sign on behalf of the board now.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that. All right, I think that's all I need, thank you very much.
Great, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Larry? You're up.
I've unmuted, sorry.
That's okay.
Somebody rang the doorbell, so the dogs went crazy. So I've been asked to, if I could attend this meeting, to talk about the Ulta signage.
Yes.
So I didn't know if you would like to present me with questions, if you would like to just have me present what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we do it, whatever you'd like, sir.
Why don't you just tell us what you want to do?
Okay, so back in December, I contacted the city and I spoke to Tim Nyheart.
Yeah.
And Tim had mentioned to me that the way that, because I wanted to prepare a plan for Ulta to go to the landlord and say, this is what we can do. So Mr. Nyheart told me that what I needed to do was I needed to look at the Pier One sign and do a measurement of that sign, and then make sure that the sign I was proposing wasn't bigger than that sign in square footage. So I shared an email with Mr. Nyheart, and as I had mentioned before, I've been doing staple signs for twenty years, so I kind of know the way these backgrounds work, so Staples has a red background, Pier One has a blue, some of my other clients have blue. So what I did was I measured the blue area of the signage for Pier One, that being five foot six inches by thirty feet. I prepared the drawing and then I sent it to Mr. Nyheart, but I got a response from his office that he had shingles and he was having difficulty seeing, and that he wouldn't be answering. I don't know if that's consistent with, with what you've heard from that office, but, you know, that's, that's what had happened. So what I did was I prepared the, yes.
Just so we can update you on that, Mr. Nyheart has since retired. Middle of April was his last working day, the new building inspector is Tom Quinlan Jr.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Okay, well, that's great, I, I hope he is healthy and happy. Mr. Nyheart, that is, after, you know, from what I'm assuming shingles is not a good, not a good feeling thing. So what I did was I took that information that Mr. Nyheart gave me, and I prepared the Ulta package accordingly to make sure that our signage was smaller actually than the Pier One signage. So I prepared, I prepared drawings based on a hundred and sixty-five square feet of current Pier One. The signage that we've asked for is a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. We've also got a small blade sign, so people down the way, if they're at a different store, can see that there's an Ulta.
Okay, so can I just interrupt for a minute, is that same sign package that Ruth Shim sent to me this afternoon?
Well, all I can do is hold it up, if that's okay.
Let me, let me see if I can go into screen sharing again.
Well, I think it's what I saw on your screen, it looks like it.
Looks like it, yeah.
That's the same one that I sent over.
Okay. Is that useful at all?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Get this to all board members, but we'll leave it up for discussion purposes.
Okay, so that is, that's how I got to what we have proposed here tonight. And I know that, you know, we are before the board to ask for approval of this package.
So as I explained in my email to Ruth, the, basically all the sign packages in that mall are pre-existing non-conforming items, the bylaw has been changed, but as long as you're within the parameters of what you're replacing, we would not allow internally illuminated signage on new construction, but as long as you're within the parameters of what you're replacing, that seems fine.
Yeah, and according to, according to the information that Mr. Nyheart gave me, I feel we're, we're very much within that, Bill.
So, the sign will be internally eliminated?
Yes, sir, it'll be internally illuminated. The faces are gray during the day, and then through the magic of the three M film on the face, they'll turn white at night.
Okay.
And it's a pretty standard industry film, it's just, it's a, it's a gray film with a million little dots in it.
I'm gonna ask the question, if it's not possible, that's fine, is there any, any way that could be made, a backlit sign?
It, it could be, yes, sir, it, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't fit in with the rest of the center, whereas everyone else would have, you know, illuminated letter sets. We, it, it could be made, I, I won't tell you it couldn't be, Ulta truly would like it to be, you know, illuminated faced like the rest of the signs in the center.
Okay, now, the awning, you have, you have signage on all three awnings. And is that factored into your calculation for area?
Yes, sir, those are less than one square foot each, so let's just call them two for sake of argument. That, if it was two square feet, they're only four inches tall. So if they were two square feet, that's six square feet on the awning. Again, rounding up, five square feet on the blade sign and a hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and twenty-eight square feet on the sign. So it would be a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and thirty-nine, sorry, a hundred and thirty-nine square feet versus the one hundred and sixty-five square feet that, that, you know, I had mentioned earlier in my, in my comments.
Now, are those awnings illuminated underneath?
No, sir.
Okay, the, just for, because you're adding more quantity of signs than you have today, you're putting in, the way I read it, five signs?
Well, with, with the Valance copy, Jim, yes, it would be, there's five readings of Ulta, yes.
Okay. You need to, you can't have more than four.
Okay, what I could do, if it would, you know, if it would help the board, I could just get rid of the copy on all three awnings.
Well, I'm just saying you're allowed four signs.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is if I take it off of one of the awnings, it'll kind of look off-center, so instead of just going four, I would just take the copy off of all three awnings.
Okay, all right.
That way, it just visibly looks better.
Okay.
So then we've down to a hundred and thirty-two square feet. Thirty-two square feet, yes.
So, so what are the dimensions on that Ulta sign? Clearly, it's wider than the Pier One imports, right?
Seven feet tall by nineteen feet wide. The issue becomes, because of the Ulta National Mark, they call it the ribbon, it, it kind of throws out of whack the actual size of the sign. So square footage-wise, it is less, it's just because of that, the way that the logo is used, and it really isn't used by any other national retailers, a logo like that, and it is on over twelve-hundred of their stores across the country.
So when you're, you're gonna have the blade sign and the big Ulta sign, is that's correct?
Yes, sir, I'll, and I didn't see who said that, I'm sorry, I will, I will change the drawings to remove the three Ultas, Ulta Beauty on each one of the awnings.
Okay.
And that, and it's because, again, if it's four, it won't look right if I, if I put, you know, ones on the outside or just the one in the middle, so I think it'll just be more attractive if I just remove all three.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So the other item, it was involved is the actual change of use from retail to health and beauty. And they did provide a narrative that I sent around that basically said that they sell beauty, there'll be retail and salon services, all of which are allowed in the district.
Will they be doing, just selling beauty products, or will they actually be doing a salon as well?
Yes, all Ultas, all Ultas have a salon in the back of the store.
Okay, so will be a salon.
A large part of the store is products.
So the base, the options that would be on the building, I don't know if they have a picture of the particular configuration where you're having, just because they don't. But I mean, are you asking me to have someone draw the picture then? I could potentially do that.
We would like to see a picture of what will be constructed. We aren't fussy where the windows are, first floor, second floor, two, three, one, where the door is, what the size of the door is, it's not, it's not really what we're after here. We just want to see a picture, a real picture of what will be constructed. Because for people to say, well, it's gonna be this, but it won't have this, it won't have this, you know, we've got, we have five members and they each have a different vision in their head, and when it's finally built, it may be, well, that's not what we thought.
Okay, so, so if I take the photograph, I think you said, take the photograph and put some markups to show where the, the the door and the rest will be, or, I mean, I, I don't, I can't get a photograph of a building that doesn't exist, so I can have someone either draw something, or I can mark up the picture I sent earlier.
Yeah, I'd like to see an accurate elevation. I mean, I don't know, Jim, if that's, you know, I'd like to see them draw an elevation of what it's gonna look like, and not stand alone, but next to the building, so we'd see how its height relates and what it's gonna actually look like from the street.
And didn't Janet Stone from Conservation, not, not that this is our purgory, say something, it might be an issue with wetlands?
I'm not sure what her final, the top, top comment was on that. Do you remember, Bill, did she have a comment on the wetlands on that one yet?
Uh, yes, I think I forwarded it around, but let me.
Yeah, she said that the, the drainage basins, she had to find out if they were filed as wetlands or not. So it sounded like she was still looking into it, is the way I read it.
What she said is, it is right next to the detention basin, which may or may not be a problem. If they are old enough and have not been maintained, the detention basins can still qualify as wetlands as well. So she wanted to check out the file for the original approval.
Any approval we get is subject to other board approval.
Yes. But it looks like we're not ready to vote anything tonight, anyway, so she may have an answer by our next meeting.
No, the basins were modified when they added the second story and did the modifications, but we'll let Concom makes that call.
Yeah, that's. Okay.
Yeah, for the drawing you're requesting, I'm, is, I'm not familiar with that, is that something Mark Donald knows how to do, or is that something I have an architect do?
You probably need an architect to do that, you, you really need a perspective of the shed in relationship to the existing school?
I don't think that he needs a perspective, I think just a two-dimensional elevation. I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that, that wants to see how that looks from the street. I think if it's, if it stayed behind the building, I wouldn't care, but now that it's out front, I kind of want to see how it's gonna look.
Okay.
I don't think you'll be able to see it from the street, but that's.
No.
A full site plan, I think you'd have a really tough time seeing that from the street.
Would that be visible from the street?
If you're asking me, it's well back from the street, I mean, I don't know whether you'd see the top of it from the street or not. I, I mean, I'd have to have someone look at, but it's, it's, it's well back and away from the street, so, but I couldn't say with authority one way or another.
Is there any?
Probably four hundred feet back from the street at least, maybe five hundred.
Isn't it closer to the street than the, than the main building?
Not, no, it's, it's near the rear of the building, I mean, the front of the building is probably another hundred and fifty feet from this.
I suspect the only place you're gonna see it from the street is if you're driving by and looking into the Mountain Farm small parking lot, you might see it beyond the parking lot.
Actually, from the parking lot, it would be obstructed by our building, the, the only way you could see it from a street would be on Route Nine if you were looking between our building and the Subaru dealership, and so, and, and again, it's, it's well back and there's at least this gentle slope in the front of the, the site, so I don't know whether you could see anything or not, but.
It's, it's in a part of Halle that has little ambiance, I don't think it's gonna ruin, ruin the view from.
I see, it's forward of the addition, but it's behind the existing front, all right.
It, yeah, it's toward of, sort of adjacent to the very rear of the original structure.
Right, right.
But it's in front of the, the addition, that's correct, and it's, it's close to the, the Subaru, so it's, it's sort of hidden away in that context, but, I mean, it might, I mean, and that would get into whether, I mean, I know that there are rules about having couplets and stuff like that, I mean, if you put a couple on it, you might see it, because it's high enough that you would. So you guys can decide whether you want that or not, we're flexible about putting that on.
I don't think we need a couple, it's not, it's not gonna be visible from the street, so I'll accept, well, it'll be visible from the bike path, that's about it.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think, I don't think you need, I don't think you need a couple on it.
Okay.
No.
But, I mean, something that Mark probably could draw would just be a picture of one side's gonna face the building, your, your existing building, right?
Yes.
And it's gonna be how many feet away from the building?
Um.
I would guess about forty feet.
Okay.
The, the, from the original building, it's on the opposite side of the detention pond, and it's actually closer to the car dealership on, on that, in, in terms of the positioning. It is close to the corner of the addition, and so I don't know how many feet that is, but in terms of the original building, it's, it's well away from that.
Okay, you know, rather than, you may just want to give us a picture of the four sides of the building.
Okay.
The seven, three D, you just, you know, four two-D views, if you would.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and again, am I having someone draw this, or am I taking the photograph that was supplied by the vendor and showing you where things are located by having arrows saying, this is where the door will be?
I'd prefer to see a draw picture.
Okay, we'll do that.
Not a marked up picture.
Okay. And, and again, I, my expectation is we'll use essentially the color scheme and, and rest as shown in the picture, just because that seems like a pretty, I mean, that's, I think compatible with the existing building and the rest.
That should be fine.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be an artist's rendering, but just black and white drawn to scale.
Okay, well, we have an architect, I think, can do, give us a drawing. Now, you're saying that we should wait, at some level, we should wait to hear from the Conservation Commission person and.
Well, if you're too close to the wetland, you become a wetland issue, you may have, well, I mean, you could be, all you'd have to do is move the building someplace else.
But the, I mean, we built an addition right next to that detention pond, so it wasn't viewed as a wetland at that time.
We, we don't, we don't.
For, Bill, with regards to the affordable, the affordable units language, and maybe, I, I guess, do you want to talk about what we're, what I've been up to, up to the point of talking about affordable housing with you, or, because there, I, I haven't really done any, I don't have any product regarding the, the, we were working on the planning regs that we wanted to also include stormwater regulations in that discussion. I know after speaking to Patty Gamborini, I think that there was probably one sort of, she wanted to have one meeting with the working group to, to fine-tune what that final product was gonna look like. And that's specific to her work, and, you know, with, with all of the confusion about the billing, I think I've finally got a green light for, you know, now I have a different code to, to charge the work that I'm doing with you all. But I think where we left off with regards to stormwater, there's probably one more meeting she would like to have with the working group to smooth that product off, and then what I imagined, based on our last meeting in February, was that, you know, either concurrently or right after, we can review a, a, a document which would have planning board rules and regs based on the various documents that you've shared with me, and that I think you've explored at some points in the past, on, on how to create a inclusive document with regulations from all of the bylaws that suggest that you need one.
So you're suggesting that the stormwater regulations will be with a part of a larger regulations package?
Well, I think, I think you wanted to, unless, unless I didn't understand correctly, you know, the regulations, I, I think you wanted to have a public hearings to include both an approval of the stormwater regulations as well as the planning board's rules and regs. So, you know, I think it was just the timing that needed to be, you know, finessed and, and, but at the end of the day, either can happen before or after, but I think it was just for the, the, the reason that you wanted to have them in one public hearing.
No, I think you're remembering it correctly, if, if we were going to, as we're talking about the stormwater regs, and there would also have to be some tweaks to our subdivision regs to conform to the stormwater regs, and if we're having a public hearing on both of those, it would make sense to address, to adopt overall regs as well, but I think we could do the stormwater and the stormwater part of subdivision separately if we had to, but I, I think we, everything's been bumped back another six months or another year.
Yeah. So for the stormwater regs, the thing is you have the bylaw in place and the bylaw allows the, um, the bylaw, which is, um, is in compliance with the new MS4 permit, that as far as that town is safe. Um, as, as you are aware, Bill, the, um, and probably the board, uh, those, um, rules had to actually were pushed out to 2021, the summer of 2021. So where we were trying to work up to June 30th of this year, um, since then, EPA has moved that deadline to 2021, the summer of 2021. So in fact, the, the town has adopted, the, the, uh, the bylaw at the very least, we were working towards, um, completing the regulations, which we would do, um, eventually during this time. Um, but you're right, there is some, some time, um, to play with. Um, but I think that, you know, this may be the reality. So it's for, you know, a few more months at the very least, um, exploring a way to, um, get Patty to work with the town to finish the work with regards to that. And, you know, I can, um, as I have been doing with other communities, look at the stormwater regulations, um, or the, sorry, the subdivision regulations and see how they fit in. Um, I don't think that there is any major haul to it. Um, it is, and, and I think at the end of the day, I think, um, we're presenting, um, areas within the subdivision regulations that are suggesting, um, green infrastructure or lid, um, low impact development, um, where applicable or where feasible. Um, and so I think that's going to be what the, the nature of the, the suggested edits would be to the subdivision regulations with regards to stormwater. Um, but. Go ahead.
US4 getting pushed up to 21, 2021 was done before everybody was confined to nowhere. So that, that could even move more out.
That's very true. Um, that is very true. Um, and, uh, you know, it, I guess it, it's at the direction of the board, how I think based on my understanding, and I think based on, um, the town administrator with regards to that funding mechanism, I don't know, um, for the work for the stormwater, what the deadline is of that money. Um, but I know that, you know, through planning board assistance with my work with the board, it is fiscal year. So, you know, we'll be exploring a new contract for the following year, should you want to, um, you know, re, uh, to re-up.
We have budgeted for an increase. Um, it's going through finance committee now, so we'll see what comes out on the other end.
And, and, and that's contingent on the town meeting approval, correct?
In the meantime, Ken, maybe what we should be doing, because the time is getting close to us, is prepare a contract for next fiscal year beginning, uh, what is it? July 1, Bill?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even if we just use the same $7,500, we can always amend that after the fact if it gets approved. Whenever, because the town meeting right now won't be scheduled for late June. So it's going to be very tight to use that. So it'd be nice if we could at least get this $7,500 contract going in the meantime, and we can always amend that.
And, um, remember that, uh, and there are, are, uh, I'm going to dig that out. Uh, maybe I'll even send it around again, because there were some things in there that we didn't get to five and six years ago that are still relevant, but they just kind of got passed by or were overtaken by something that was more pressing.
Yeah.
So, um, I think it would be useful to spend some time looking at the work program and deciding what we want to focus on. Apart from some things like this that we have to focus on. Uh, can the, um, the funding for stormwater compliance comes out of a warrant article? Which means it's basically, uh, it's going to, it, it's until, it's until we run out of work or run out of money.
Okay.
There's no, and there's no end date on it per se, but we don't want to drag it out forever either, obviously.
Right. Um, okay. Well, that's good to know. I'll, I'll share that with Patty. I, you know, I think, um, more than likely Jim Patty will be reaching out, um, with regards to maybe setting up a schedule for at least one virtual meeting with the working group. Um, kind of refreshing everyone's.
Okay.
You know, um, where, where, where we were with the process.
Right. That, that's fine. We can do that.
Okay. Um, so I think if we're shifting gears, um, Bill, you had sent out some examples of language from bylaws across the Commonwealth that were related to pi, um, payments in lieu of units. Um, I guess, um, and this is, this is in regards to your inclusionary zoning.
Correct.
Section of your zoning bylaw. Um, I guess the, the question is, is there, were you looking at it to amend or, or add a, a section? Cause that, looking at kind of your past town meeting, um, minutes, it looked as if you removed, um, possibly a section that was related to that.
We, we did, uh, because the, the, at the time we adopted inclusionary zoning, there was a companion article for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The trust fund did not pass. The inclusionary zoning did. So we had this mismatch. They had the dangling provision for payment in lieu, um, but nowhere to pay it to. And it wasn't an issue for years because nothing was being built that was triggering the inclusionary zoning.
Okay.
Uh, it became an issue with the senior housing on East Street. And when the developer really was looking for a way to make, uh, payments in lieu, rather than try to figure out how to manage affordability on site. Uh, so we decided, we had taken out the language, what we initially adopted affordability, inclusionary zoning, it had the language in it. We then amended inclusionary zoning to delete that language. We would now like to add it back in.
Okay.
But we realized that the original language we used was so open ended, it didn't provide any basis for calculating. Compare that to our transfer of development rights by law, which is very specific about the funding formula. And what, what you have to make, what you have to pay and what you get for what you pay.
Mm-hmm.
We just don't have that piece. Now, uh, after I did my research, um, Mike came up with an idea as well. Um, I think the first thing we want to think about is, um, clearly, as you look through the options there, uh, the various things that various towns have adopted. In some cases, it seems very apparent that the town wants to discourage payment in lieu.
Yeah.
Uh, in other cases, they seem to want to work with the developer.
Kind of arbitrary too. There was no mathematical reason for coming up with these numbers, I thought. They were just, you know, pull them off the wall and see what sticks. And I, I'm not a lawyer, but I, Bill's used the phrase arbitrary, arbitrary and capricious in the past. And I thought most, most of these, uh, uh, statements of what should be contributed were arbitrary and capricious. They had no basis, what was really the, what the value of the product was.
Three times the median standard.
Yeah. All right.
And, and it's like, whose measurement of median would they be using? Would it be DHDDs and HUDs? Um, with regards to, you know, the, um, the affordability factor, the 80% of the annual median income? I think in, in my experience in working, um, on a few cases where inclusionary zoning and, 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 uh, communities wanting to adopt, um, payment in lieu of units. Um, I've seen it done similarly as, as, um, as Bill had provided to you all. I, I do think that, um, maybe a building, um, industry standard based on, um, how much did it cost to create a single unit?
Kind of getting there, but the question is what is the value of the subsidy that's being provided? And the, I'll just give my spiel as to what I came up with. The value of the subsidy that's being provided is what it costs to build the unit versus what the rents are going to be for that unit. That difference is essentially what's being subsidized. And so my idea was to come up with a number. What is the cost to build the affordable unit? And speaking with, uh, Jimmy Maximowski last week, we said, well, let's go with a 1,400 square, uh, square foot unit, building, whatever. The wholesale cost of building one of those, uh, right now is $85 a square foot. So to build 1,400, 1,400 square feet is going to cost $119,000. What is the cost of the land that you're going to put that on? That's a variable. I said 120,000. So we've got a total construction cost wholesale plus land cost of 239,000. Do we include in that insurance and taxes? For purposes of this illustration, I didn't. So another variable here is the cost of money. 15-year mortgage, two and three quarters right now, the cost of money is pretty low. So amortizing that $239,000 as if it were a mortgage over a 15-year period, you would have a total cost in today's dollars of about $292,000. Okay. So that's one number, 292,000. And that number can change if you throw insurance in or taxes for that 10-year period. But we're doing it in today's dollars. The next question is, what are the rents? I asked, uh, someone over at the, uh, head of the, uh, senior center, what the highest rent was in town. It's $900 for a two-bedroom unit. So taking 900 times 15 years, times 12 months a year, you come up with $162,000. Okay. In present dollars. So the value of that subsidy for 15 years is 292,000 versus 162,000, which says you should be putting into the trust $130,000. And we can back that number up mathematically. There's certain, but at least we can back the number up and it's not just saying it's going to be three times the average income or, or some, some, some other number. We can back it up mathematically. I think it's defensible.
So, uh, just curious.
Like I said, the only thing we need to verify out of that is Mike got the number from the senior center on the rent in Hadley. What we need to verify that is, is what is the subsidized rent or the maximum rent that a family could afford for a house like that? Cause there is, that, that number exists. I just don't know what it is. There's a maximum number that for the median income of all the subsidized, the, that kind of stuff.
He told me the, I assumed that was a subsidized rent. And so she told me $900 for a two-bedroom. That sounds, sounds like a subsidized to me. But it could be wrong. But yeah, that's a variable. That's a variable.
Yeah. All I'm saying is that needs to be verified. What, that shouldn't be difficult to do.
Yeah. And the other question would be, do we include in the amortization? Do we add 15 years' worth of insurance and taxes? Because we're doing it in present dollars, today's dollars. Okay? And so we're not going to put any inflation factor in or anything. The only inflation we've got is the two and three quarters, which is not two and three quarters. Inflation is the cost of money. So.
So where I get confused is why you are calling it rent?
Because what, what, the assumption is, the assumption is that people aren't going to be buying these properties. They're going to be renting these properties. And I thought we talked about this before, because generally if you're subsidizing, uh, living situations, perhaps you're not going to be able to qualify it for a mortgage to buy something.
But the rental, the rental situation, that's not all that complex, I don't think, you know? Well, Winfield is able to manage that. The problem that we're really wrestling with is the Barry Roberts problem.
I'm not worried about whether they're renting it or buying it. I'm just saying, what is the value of the subsidy? It doesn't matter if they're renting it or not. But we, there, we have to put a value on the subsidy and the sub, and the subsidy is going to be basically very simple terms, what it costs to build it and what the rents are going to be for that. The difference is what the subsidy is.
And then.
We, we need, we need, we, because clearly it's going to cost somebody something. You've got an opportunity cost here. It's going to cost somebody something to live there somehow.
Yep. And like I said, we need to simply verify the number because they got it from the senior center for the rent. Is that a valid number? I don't know. It might be.
That was apparently, that was apparently the highest, I asked for the highest rents. We could go with the lowest rent. When I, when I got the, 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 uh, number, a, a, a member of the community is running for select board was there and she said, I wish you could bring that down. Well, I can't, I can't change that. It is what it is, you know?
My, my only, my only point is that there is a number.
Yeah.
The state puts out for, for maximum subsidized for, for the family of, what is for this area? There is that number in existence from the state.
Yeah. So, so basically every time this issue comes up, we're going to have to, here's my, you know, this is my back of the envelope dissertation. We're going to have to do a calculation. What is the whole, and we're going to have to agree on is there going to be a 1,400 square foot house or unit? What's the wholesale cost of building that? What is the land cost? Do we include insurance and taxes? That's the total cost. But those are the variables every time we come up with this. Then we're going to have to determine what the rent is. And I just came up with a 15-year mortgage, amortize it over 15 years. I figured maybe that'd be the turnover for something like this, but we could do a 30-year. But I think 13 is more. If you did a 30-year, then you'd be probably be contributing a hell of a lot more to the, the trust. Okay?
Your calculations make good sense, Mike. I'm not questioning what you're saying. I'm just saying that we, we, we need to look at what the, like I said, get, get back to where we got to find out from the, from the state for our area, what is that magic number for rent or mortgage, whatever you want to call it? Verify and then we, the number, does it make sense for what we want to put into the bylaw? That's all.
This is a little thing I just wrote up. The amount to be paid into the Hadley Affordable Housing Trust should be calculated as follows. One, determine the total 15-year cost of the affordable housing unit, including wholesale construction costs, land costs, insurance costs of 15 years and taxes for 15 years in present dollars. This total will then be amortized over a 15-year period utilizing then 15-year fixed mortgage rate as published by the East Hampton Savings Bank. From one above subtracting, subtract the total amount of rent, which, which would be paid over the 15-year period in today's dollars. This number will give the dollar amount to be paid into the insurance trust. Pretty simple calculation. But you know, you could massage it any way you want. At least we, we can try to value, value what's being given rather than saying, pulling something out of the air.
And, and that, that's, that's, that's fine. And then we can look at the number. Is it a number that we want to go with? I mean, I don't know how well, cause what Mike has presented makes logical sense for the donation.
I need some comments, you guys. I need some feedback.
No, it sounds good. I, I kind of imagine that we would have to revisit those numbers every three to five years.
Well, we're going to have to revisit them every time the issue comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would suggest that based on some of the, based on some of the examples that, uh, Bill provided, um, there is, um, I, I can't remember the one town, but it would be review of a pro forma that they would probably be presenting to you, um, to the board. Um, and that because it requires a, a permit, is it a special permit? Um, that you would, um, part of your condition would include that. Condition of approval. I guess, is, is that how? I, it, it sounds as if the, the, the town has not yet, um, done this, um, payment in lieu.
Well, we have gone through the exercise where, um, this senior housing off of East Street got a variance to make a payment in lieu, even though we. got a variance to make a payment in lieu, even though we didn't have a vehicle to hold it, because they were having such demonstrated difficulty and the backside of, um, selling affordable properties. So, uh, we went through an exercise with the developer, and it more or less followed the, uh, the pattern that Boylston on the first page, uh, talks about, uh, the final contribution for each affordable unit should be equal to the difference between the average market sale price for the market rent and the purchase price deemed affordable, uh, uh, for a person low-income household. So it, it has the advantage of a, you know, there, there was a logic to how we got there. Basically, we're getting the developer's profit, what would have been the developer's profit on four units, which I think were the, the affordable requirement. But a lot of.
Do you recall how much we got in, Bill, for each one? Do you recall?
Uh, I don't, off the top of my head, um.
What was that question, Mike?
Do you recall how much Barry Roberts paid for each unit? You know?
I know what, I know the approximate total that is sitting in the fund.
Yeah.
So there's about $350,000 in the fund, which equates to about $10,000 per unit of the entire development.
Yeah.
I think there's 34 units. And there's 350, about 350,000, so basically 10,000 a unit.
Well, he's actually putting more in it, so let me, let me.
24 units, 15,000 a unit.
Well, that would come thousand per. You know? So the formula isn't wacky, okay? It's not wacky.
No, you've done good work, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah.
Finally, my Wharton education's coming in handy.
Okay, hang on a second, and I will get, I've set this around before, but I'll, uh, I'm just going to print that out again. Uh, some numbers. And this is more on the side of why we need, uh,
Ken, excuse me, Bill, in your experience in terms of affordable housing, what percentage are rentals and what percentage are purchases?
Um, when I was dealing with affordable housing, it was all rentals, so, um, because I was working in large cities that had
Yeah.
visionary zoning.
Right.
Um, you know, my experience with is with, with, um, home sales is that our homeownership is, um, you know, the provision that those, those, uh, units in a subdivision, let's just use that as an, as a quick example, um, would remain affordable per, um, the HUD standard, um, or affordability and deed restricted, or there would be the, with the deed. Um, and this was, um, in Florida when.
Yeah, so, so, so if, if someone wanted to purchase as opposed to rent and they, they could meet the criteria, the bank's criteria, income, uh, ratios and credit, blah, 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 down payment if necessary. In order to be, remain affordable, a cap would be placed on any potential appreciation the original purchaser might enjoy in the, in a.
I would have to check that. It makes sense logically.
So, so my question is, why does someone, would someone want to invest in a property if they can't over time gain, as a capital gain, the appreciation of that property? That, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me, but, you know.
Well, I think there probably are some examples where it's more important to get off the street and into a house than financial gain on it.